Yes, the next item is brought by me to consider the creation of an ordinance for banning overnight camping on Humboldt County owned properties. I want to say that this was not a negative item that came. It is not about removing houseless folks. It's about what can be accomplished if there was an, there was an ordinance that says that we could work with them. And I want to reference to, I initially left this pretty blank and I asked Sheriff Hansel and Director Mattson to come and do some updates. But I do want to just talk about, a little bit about my district in the Dean Creek area where there's private property there. And through the deputies down there, I went with the deputies and we identified quite a few folks that were in, on private land. And they, the landowners gave consent to the sheriffs to have those folks removed. But the sheriffs, the deputies did it so well. And then I connected also with show. We gave them a month. We helped them get their items out. We found some housing through the show. And what we've found when we were addressing some of the other folks was that they didn't have any kind of commitment or desire to move because there wasn't a reason for them to, even though housing had been offered, show had engaged in them. And so I think that there's a very good way to do this, but to also, you know, encourage folks to seek that housing that can be available to them, which Southern Humboldt has done very well with the Housing For All unit down there. But we're not, we're finding some folks that feel very comfortable on those county properties. And so they don't feel the need to even try to seek that help, even when it's offered. And so I wanted, before we did a ton of work on this, I wanted for the board to weigh in in case it's not something we, or a direction we want to go. And so I have Sheriff Hansel and Director Mattson to report on how, for the sheriff, how he interacts and how his deputies do. And then Director Mattson on the costs that it keeps recurring us for cleaning up these properties. So whoever would like to go first, thank you. And thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. I appreciate the invitation to address the board regarding this, this issue. To put it in context, we responded to about 1,500 calls over the last five years when it comes to camping. And we handle those calls a couple of different ways. If it's private property, we'll go, we'll assess those, those camps. Sometimes it's just an overnight camper. They haven't established, you know, true grounding or residency on those properties. So we, we are the advocate for the property owner. We provide them, the person opportunity to leave because they're trespassing. And, and so a lot of times we resolve them. But there's other times where people have properties, you know, outside of Redway is a common area where people just camp. It's public land or private land and people just squat camp and they've established residency essentially in these, in these areas. And, and so we have worked with the property owners to provide notices. And then we bring in supportive staff and we lead with compassion in these, in these circumstances where we're trying to steer people towards services. And to try and care for their needs and provide them housing, food, medical care. And I think people would be shocked if they actually walked with us into these, into these unsheltered areas where people are, are struggling. And to see how we treat them and to show that there is compassion beside them. And also the deplorable conditions that they're living in, that we don't treat animals the way that people are leaving, living in some of these areas in Humboldt County. And, and so it's really tragic to see how some people are mentally ill or addicted to controlled substances. And they allow themselves to live in really just awful conditions. And that it becomes a public health issue in these areas. And, and so we lead with compassion. We offer services and we provide opportunities for people to, to steer towards those services. And then we check back with them. If they, if they don't leave and we have a valid reason to make an arrest because they've refused to leave, then we will do that. And, and, and we will provide, we will, the things that are valuable on their site. We will box up and, and hold for them. And, and then ultimately then clean up with the property owner, those areas. So that's on private property. On public land, you know, as you know, we had the Grants Pass decision that was recently overturned by the Supreme Court last year, June of 24. And which gave opportunity for cities and counties to establish ordinances, no camping ordinance. And it wasn't cruel and unusual punishment to, to provide these ordinances to the unsheltered. And so many counties are establishing ordinances throughout the state regarding how they should treat people, whether it's camping in vehicles, camping on public land. And how, you know, how different counties are dealing with that. You know, so when we look at public land right now, the areas that we're concerned with, McKay Track has, has had issues with people that are camping off Palmer Boulevard. And as well as off Lucas Street. Those are three areas that come to mind. I know there's many more throughout, throughout the county. But, but our deputies have responded constantly to try and to warn people, to provide opportunities for people to move, move on. And, and so we have to provide no trespassing ordinance, you know, orders and, and those kinds of things from, based on the county that they are trespassing. They are, they are polluting the, the environment by, you know, urinating, defecating, disposing of, you know, of garbage, you know, throughout those, those camps. And so we are enforcing those laws in order to help people get to an area where they can become housed. And, but an ordinance would help in those, in those circumstances. And, and so we're here to, to provide that input or that feedback and to offer even studying that, you know, for a future ordinance.
Thank you. I wanted to add that when I, when I looked up how many counties and cities have start, you know, are trending this way. There's a widespread trend, trend, more than two dozen California cities and counties have passed new ordinances or made existing ones stricter since a 2024 Supreme Court ruling. City specific ordinances, many have been passed. Even Fortuna has one currently. And then county level examples, some counties have also passed their own ordinances. For instance, San Joaquin County has considered a ban and Santa Clara County has an ordinance prohibiting unpermitted camping in, in documented unrestricted areas. There are, there are areas in, of county property that are for camping and those are permitted. Various restrictions, and I didn't bring any ordinance specific because I wanted the board to weigh in. But varying restriction, restrictions, the specific details of these bans vary. Some are very comprehensive with others are more nuanced, such as San Diego's ban that it is only enforced if shelter beds are available. So if there is a place for them to be and they aren't taking those services up, then that would be where this could come into play. Which I, I will reference to Southern Humboldt and the Bear Canyon Bridge, which is on both sides as county property. And is a tributary right into the South Fork of the Eel that has been cleaned up so many times. And we thank goodness have Friends of the Eel River, or excuse me, the cleanup, Eel River Cleanup Crew that goes out every Thursday and gets thousands of pounds of garbage. And they, they go on county properties. That's where they service the most. And it, it is redundant for them. It is expensive, you know, but they are so dedicated, but it's been for years. And those, that Bear River area, as well as some areas along the Dean Creek area, which had huge fire this last summer because the deputies. And I did walk all those camps and I went in and some of those folks asked for extensions. They were given a month. We helped them pack up their things and then show found them, them places to live. And they said, oh, I need another week. And we, the deputies allowed that with the property owners. It, it worked really great. And the, we had one fire in the Dean Creek area this year where we were having one a week previously. So those were just some thoughts. And then I wanted Tom to, sorry Director Mattson, to talk about the financial portion of this.
So, good morning, Chair Bushnell, members of the board, Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works. Public Works is really on the tail end of this issue. It's really the sheriff and DHHS that take the lead. We run anywhere from 50 to 150,000 direct dollars for disposal of illegal waste every year, sometimes more. But that's not all of our indirect cost. Many times we were, you know, directly hand in hand where the sheriff has an issue, say at Fields Landing where there was a big issue there. And it was really a signing problem at first, but then they just moved out and onto the road and we had to follow up with a, a no parking ordinance. And that has worked for us and that's been our tool. It is time consuming. I know the sheriff's department is waiting on us right now for another problem area that they have to get the no parking ordinance through. It's what we used out on the peninsula, which took basically two years to get the ordinance approved because I had to go through the Coastal Commission. It was a joint partnership. So an overall public ordinance would probably be very helpful in shortening the timeline of, of when these issues come up. Again, I'm not the expert on these issues. We do not segregate illegal dumping by campsites out from illegal dumping that we collect everywhere. People dump out at Grab Park, they're not camping there. You know, the McKay Track was a very specific issue that required a, a large commitment of the sheriff to deal with one very specific individual. Going out there repeatedly, repeatedly having to deal with this individual because they could not move him. So just to, to take a quick look, we do, again, hire new beginnings, John Shelter, just as everybody else does. He's got a good program to go in, notify people that they're coming in for a cleanup, try to get them in touch with all the services that are out there. And then come in for the cleanup. You know, underneath Bear River Bridge, there was a fire and it damaged, did some damage to the bridge. But just going through over the last two years, you know, Redway, Garberville, that's the, the specific bridge area. Over a ton of garbage was taken out from underneath that bridge and had to be disposed of. Lolita General Area, over 1,500 pounds including nine tires, two televisions and a freon containing refrigerator, which costs even more to dispose of. Oric, 2,300 pounds, including 28 hours clearing through the willows to get to the campsites on the levee system in order to get that cleaned up. And again, that, the levee has ordinances, the parks have ordinances, but we still have the problem. But we have the areas that are ancillary, you know, Fern Bridge area is a constant issue. I think the sheriff was out there a couple of weeks ago, over the last two years, almost two tons, seven tires, 110 pounds of e-waste and one TV. And this is all on the river bar, basically, in the flood zone plain. And when it floods Fern Bridge, we generally get the homeless encampment flooded. And if it's not cleaned up, that's where all that garbage is going. And that is not a good thing. Bay Trail McKay, almost 2,000 pounds, Lucas Street, 900 pounds. Little River, we have a problem site with right off the end of the road. You could call it public, you could call it private, but they're using the public road to access the area. 300 pounds, including 94 pounds of e-waste. And Wymore Road, just outside of Arcata in concert with Arcata and Caltrans and the sheriff. A joint effort there to get out over 500 pounds, two tires. And again, another 12 hours hiring the contractor to, to cut through into the brush to be able to access these places to clean them up. And to try to get to the people and get them to the services that will help them pull their boots back up. So that's basically all I have. I do think an overall ordinance could probably help. It would certainly help with the timelines when the sheriff comes to us with a problem and say, hey, what do, how can we do this? And it takes me 90 to 180 days, easy, easy to get an ordinance through and approved. So that's where we stand on it. It's really, it's, it's beyond Public Works, it's beyond the sheriff, it's beyond DHHS. This is an entire community issue. It's all hands on board. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess if, are there any questions of the board or thoughts? Supervisor Bone?
And you named off a few of the places that I've been fighting. You know, McKay's absolutely terrible. I thank goodness I've got a couple of deputies go out there, but there's no bite. And again, that's not county owned property. But in all honesty, we're going to drive them on to private properties. They're not leaving. I don't see any of them leaving town. So instead of playing a game of whack-a-mole, and you're right, Sheriff Hansel, there's a lot of people out there that need help. But it's time we kind of differentiate who needs help and who are actively taking advantage of us. And I mean, we've all, or I have, lost property and I know it's gone into the McKay. All those people along McKay have been having issues along there. Fields Landing, we put, I mean, thank you, Tom, but we put up 10 loads of rock, 14 signs. The boat, the Jimmy Smith Boat Launch, which should be a special place, is far from being special. Cause now they go in at, they'll park somewhere on the side street and then they'll run to it at sunrise and stay till they are run out. Not sunset, even though that's signed, they will run out at sunset when they're told. We can't have a deputy down at Fields Landing every night. I understand that. So this sounds great and I, and I appreciate this being brought forward. But in the areas that they've done it, they're, nobody's going, DHHS says, we will handle that, we'll handle that. And you're right, they need housing, that we don't have enough housing. And the problem is those people have been in housing. The reason they're out there is because they can't stay in housing. They, they are not very good tenants, a lot of them, not all of them. I'm not trying to put it, cause you can't put them all in one silo. There's, 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 there's health, I mean, there's health reasons, there's mental health reasons, there's financial reasons. And the, the reasons of the people that are coming to our garage and steal stuff. And it's really easy to hide out in the woods rather than go back to the apartment because they have my address if I'm in an apartment. So I, I don't know, and I mean, we're, we're putting it out there. But I mean, right now, we're spending the biggest part of our budgets on these things. Public Works, I mean, I've, I can't tell you how much garbage. And I've had to put in $12,000 worth of gate so they can't come in there at night. That we have to close every night out at Redwood Fields and then they, you know, but we still have to have walking access. And, and it's, it's like a parade at night. So, and I mean, that's, it is, I used to have 25, 30 people walk their dogs every day around there. They had 10 o'clock in the morning and stuff. They do not feel comfortable because I've got, I think his name was Colin. We've got a guy out there now that is causing more environmental damage than a logging operation. He's digging ditches on trails that are just washing away. He's putting roadblocks up so people can't drive their vehicles, sheriffs, public, you know, safety vehicles. There's fires happening out at the McKay for the whole length of it. And it's actually starting to cause a problem for people that are walking out there that run across him. Cause he was out there with an axe with his shirt off. And sheriff has had maybe 30 contacts with him, 40 contacts with him. But yet he's out there every night again, causing issues. I mean, I, I agree with this a hundred percent, but I don't know. I'd, I'd love to see an end result and then reevaluate in a year, because I, I don't have a problem with this. But in a year, if we're still having the same problems we're having and it's going to be extended, you know, it was, it was like, you know, the devil's playground. How many people did they say they had living down there? And that didn't fix an issue, that just spread them out farther and farther apart. And that's what's got to be addressed and we're not gonna, we're, we can't fix it because they're coming to California, it seems like. Numbers are up, new people are on the street every day. I, I, I don't know what the answer is, but voting something in that's not going to fix it, it's going to make us, but they're still going to come. And, and sheriff, you're not going to be able to patrol them. Cause in all honesty, a lot of our neighbors want to see you in the neighborhood where those guys are going while you're patrolling their homeless place. I'm sorry, it's, it's a vicious circle. And I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just, you know, I'm, I have a pretty good grasp of the obvious usually. So.
So I agree. However, this is just another tool. And if they're, and it could be written into the ordinance if there's available space in shelters or, I'll reference to the Southern Humboldt area. And this is largely why I wanted to talk about this because they're, the Southern Humboldt Housing Solutions For All is doing, they got a grant through DHHS. And they are doing a kind of a tent pallet situation down there. And they're, they do, are going to have space and they have been addressing and helping relocate folks off of private property. Trying to engage folks that are on public property, but they don't have, the sheriff can't say you have an option, you need to go because there's no ordinance. Also, DHHS with Redwood Rural has rehomed about 45 folks from down in the Southern Humboldt area. But it is, you know, becomes hard when you don't have a mechanism to say, here's your option. This is a better option and we want to help you, especially for a very problem person. And I don't like to categorize people like that. But it also, the, the community in my district is begging for something and begging for options. And I agree with Supervisor Bone that it has to be more, but I think it's a lot of tools that work and are options to address this issue. It's not going to be singularly, one thing is going to solve it. But it is an, an option that can help. And in the ordinance, it can be put in there if there's housing available, if there's this. Because also, you know, yes, I agree relocating them is going to move them around. But if there's housing available, then they need to know that camping there is not their option and that they, that there's some, some help that could help them. It's just my thoughts. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I appreciate this being brought forward. It's an important, especially my uncle.
Oh, you mean the light's supposed to be on? Yeah, I appreciate this discussion being brought forward. It's an important one. Was it Grants Pass or Boise?
Grants Pass.
Grants Pass? Okay, that was different than the Boise decision.
Yeah.
So there's been two different things. Boise let it happen, Grants Pass said no longer. Okay, gotcha. It's so complicated. I mean, one thing that's really clear to me is if we start cutting SNAP and food stamps and healthcare and everything else, the numbers are going to continue to increase. Cause a lot of families are, a lot of people are literally one paycheck from being part of this group of people looking to be housed. So how we vote matters, I would say, without getting too political. That's a really big deal when we spend all our money on tax deductions for the rich, but we don't take care of just basic common needs for people. But hey, the country's kind of waking up to that right now, maybe. We'll see how that goes. So that's the big, big picture. At the community level, I mean, I know that Supervisor Bushnell's done a lot of work in Southern Humboldt with show and, and with her community. Has a property that's been a problem property that she's been trying to deal with for a long time on many levels. I've got a lot of property owners in McKinnonville that call up and demand services, you know, Michelle's not one of them per se. But, you know, like you need to come and deal with this. And I'm like, well, why don't you fence your property? Why don't you do something? And they, they want all these services. And I'm like, you know, we're going to start billing you.
True.
These private landowners, you know, for the sheriff's time, for shelters' time, for our community trash bash with Scott Bender and Paco Green put on every, every two months. Yeah, we're revisiting the exact same places over and over again. And in three months, it gets three foot deep in this debris. It's really scary from a health perspective, just, and even for the people doing the cleanups, you know, with all the needles and just the hazardous stuff, it's crazy. So we're not solving the problems. For a while there, I was really hopeful that our camping ordinances, our tiny home ordinances, all these things we've been doing that John and Director Ford in the department have been trying to put forward. We're going to be some of the solution where we might have, you know, places for people to go because housing is not affordable. I mean, no matter what you do, that's not going to solve the problem for some of these people. And as Supervisor Bushnell said, there, and Supervisor Bone, there are a number of people that just really aren't going to ever go into those housing options, no matter what they are. Their lifestyle, their, their way of surviving is one of living in the woods. And that's, a lot of times it's a high proportion of veterans, frankly, which is, God, that's a really sad deal how that, that works. In, in McKinnonville, you know, I've been trying to talk with people about these issues and figure out solutions. And I see all these massive, large church parking lots. McKinnonville has more churches than I think almost anywhere I've ever seen. And a lot of big empty lots. And there was a time in the past where churches were very engaged and involved in trying to help with these kinds of issues. When I grew up in Orange County, there were, you know, hobos that lived in the orange groves, out in the middle of the orange grove for a lot of the year and stuff. But now it's way beyond that. But I'll say to people, hey, you know, you've got this problem in your neighborhood. If there's a wooded area in your neighborhood, you've got camps. Anywhere there's places to kind of burrow in. And I said, so, and they're unsanitary, there's no, you can't bring services to them in that condition. So what if we were to work with a church and create a sanctuary parking lot, a safe camping area fenced with services? But then the money for all that is, Michelle can tell us back there in the audience, has been disappearing. For a while there, it looked like there was getting to be more for Arcata House, for show and others. And show got some big grants, but as I'm hearing it, those monies are getting harder and harder to come by. But the idea was that, well, what if we created a, you know, a safe place to, for people to camp and be in their cars? And we could bring services, there'd be toilets and dumpsters and maybe shower setup or at least the shower caravan from AHA. And it's still in your neighborhood, but it's now sanitary. And we can start moving some of those people into services and stuff. How would that work for you? And people are like, well, I still don't like it, but maybe I'd kind of give it a try, you know? But then there's no money to do it anymore, right? So I mean, this ordinance isn't going to solve the problem. It is a tool, I agree with that. It's a tool in the toolbox. With private land, it's trespassing. And I appreciate the deputies that have helped try and work with that in, in McKinnonville. That's our prime area. But Willow Creek has issues. Oric has always had issues along the levee and the, the river bar. And when the Green Valley Motel was there, it was like a, you know, back and forth between the motel and the river bar and all this kind of stuff. So I, I don't know what the answer is. I, I gotta say, in my seven years here on the board, this is probably the most difficult problem that we have to deal with. Much more than potholes and the rest of it. Now we're starting to make progress on potholes, thank goodness. But this one, I don't know what the answers are. Is this one of the tools perhaps? But right now, I don't know where they're supposed to go. If they can't be on private land, they can't be on county land, where, then they're going to be in the door fronts on the street until they get moved in the morning. And all kinds of gnarly things are happening there. I do believe that there may be some county properties that could potentially be safe camp areas. You know, at one time we were trying to do an inventory of that, look at all our properties. Lucas Street was always brought up where the big fill site was and other places. Most often when we've looked at these, they don't really work. But, and then there's Caltrans surplus property, you know, over there by the election officers, that big plateau right there that has often been camps. Probably could house, you know, 15 tents and different things. But we've never been able to get to the place where we're able to identify these surplus properties that maybe could be used. And then again, the money is the issue. Who's, you know, one of the things about Yee-Haw, Yee-Haw had a lot of problems, but it did house 30, 40, 50 people for 20, 25 years. I wish that Charles Garth was more responsible and it could have been brought up to health standards and the rest of it. But the interesting thing about Yee-Haw was that they, they managed themselves. It didn't cost the county anything, frankly. They managed themselves. And if somebody was doing heavy drugs, they were booted out. If they were a danger to the children, they were booted out. Whereas when you set up a sanctioned camp and all this stuff, we've got to have 24/7 staffing and it's a fortune. You're starting to talk about half a million dollars a year just to kind of set it up and manage it, if not more. So I, I don't know what the solution is, I really don't. And I, this to me is just going to make it even harder for people to find a place to just survive. So I, I have issues with it from that perspective, but I appreciate the discussion, appreciate Supervisor Bushnell for bringing it forward. I certainly don't have the answers, you know, as I said, it's complicated, it's all get out. So anyway.
Thank you. I think, you know, it, it requires a lot of things and having a lot of tools. I am not foreign to this. My mom was homeless on the streets of Garberville for 10 years. And she died at 49 on the streets of Garberville, underneath the Bear Canyon Bridge. Offered her services. She had places to go, but because she was not told she couldn't be in this area, she was comfortable there. And it was a terrible place to live for her and it was not sanitary. Those areas are still happening. And I'm not asking for this board to consider moving people around. I'm asking for some help with solutions that could happen. When you have an opportunity for someone to be somewhere, for instance, the show who has the funding, has the staffing, has the beds. And people aren't utilizing those services. If we don't have a no camping ordinance on, on public properties, they don't have to, they can just be there. But if they have an opportunity to be somewhere. don't have to, they can just be there. But if they have an opportunity to be somewhere, and the deputies can say, this is an opportunity for you. This is a place for you to be instead of on this property that is county property. And the community is begging for it, for some help. And I understand everybody says this isn't going to work. Sitting here doing nothing is not working either. Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. I, I think, you know, this is certainly a topic where there are no easy answers. I just have a few thoughts that I, I wrote down, and I've been thinking about this a lot since I saw the agenda and learned we're going to be talking about this. So, you know, I, I think, thank you for helping me understand where this was an issue on county property. I mean, I can think of some sites, but it was helpful to think of the breadth of them, because I think people are conflating in, in the greater community, issues on, on private property with issues on county property. So just, you know, being laser focused on county property is important. I will say, as much as I understand that it's a tool in the tool belt, I, I have been down this road before with developing a no camping ordinance on, on public property for a different jurisdiction and, you know, it's no surprise, City of Urika. But it, it proved, in my opinion, to not be very utilized or helpful, but it did create a lot of strife. And I, I have frankly, very little appetite to kind of go down that road again, because almost always, there was another law or rule in place already on the books that could be utilized, like no overnight parking, you know, civil or criminal violations, environmental health issues that, that could be used as a tool. I realize there are times when that's not the case, and I think if we are going to go down this path, I would, I would want to try to be targeted to perhaps county parks or the community forests where there are, there are specifically a lot of issues, or places that have a lot of environmental sensitive, sensitive habitat, something like that. But I, you know, I recognize also that when people are penalized for this, in some cases, it might be, well, you can't be here, so that is the, the thing that urges folks to make a change. But a lot of times, it's just like misdemeanors that add up, and then to what and to what end? I, I think it's, it's not, I, I just haven't seen it be particularly successful, except for a handful of instances where people were sort of already primed for a change in their lives, and that was very few and far between. I will also note that if dumping, I recognize that dumping is a huge issue that we have, but it's often housed people. When you go to clean up, I mean, there are definitely abandoned camps, no, no doubt about that, where there are a lot of, there's a lot of really gross waste and people just not in a position to kind of haul it out of wherever it got to. But so much of the time in these locations where people are driving their waste there, it is housed people. And, you know, if we're trying to address dumping, the, the thing that's most supported by data is mandatory curbside pickup, so that people are required to get garbage service. I realize that's not going to work for much of the county, but that is the, the tool that, you know, has been most correlated with a reduction in, in dumping. And, you know, lastly, I, I'm, I'm also pretty reticent about operating a sanctioned camp. The City of Urika did do that for quite some time and had a rotating camp location. And, you know, it was a similar time of year, like winter conditions. And so we had to deal with flooding on site, you know, environmental health issues, sanitation, spread of infectious diseases. You know, it was, it was difficult to afford the management and oversight that were required, as well as adequate sanitation facilities for people. So it really is sort of a, a massive, not only a liability, but, you know, then, then you become the, the entity creating the conditions on the site. And that was really proved to not be doable unless we want to fund it at a degree that's quite significant. So I think if we want to go down that road, I, I'm, I'm open to the discussion. And I think it's a very, to do it right is a, is quite a challenging proposition. I would love to see the faith community and the nonprofit community step up to help. And I think we have, we certainly have structures in place to allow for that, and we could be partners. But I, I'm not seeing the capacity at this moment in time, given the other amenities and shelter space, I shouldn't say amenities, but the other things to get people through that, that we do have in place overnight, you know, emergency shelter system and all the things that we've worked on. They're not perfect, and they don't work for everybody, but those do exist. And, you know, if we can use existing tools to shunt people to those, you know, I, I, I just will say, a lot of times, you can find that if someone's camping on county property, they're also doing other things that, you know, could, could be, could be the mechanism for enforcement if we wanted to, you know, kind of require folks to move. And again, that might not be the tool for every place. So if we want to do this in a more targeted means about specific areas where we're having a big problem, I'm, I'm open to that. Those are my thoughts for now.
Supervisor Bone.
Does this, does an ordinance work for you guys better than having nothing and just saying that there's beds available? Because if there's beds available, why do I have people out to McKay? Why do I have people at, why do we have field signing? Why do we have people under the, the Bear Bridge? Why do we, why do we have all these people out there if we have, and, and it's not? You talked to Brian and everything else. A lot of these people do not pass muster, muster to get into their shelter. They, the doors aren't just open for having a place to sleep. I, I actually in the, spent a couple nights at the extreme weather shelter out at Face Center, and those were open to anybody. And to get them out of the weather for obvious reasons. But does this, does an ordinance, and, and I know, I know with the Sheriff's Association, you guys talk about this on a regular basis, and I know Tom with Public Works, does this work or doesn't it work? Or is it just a tool that won't be used? I, I understand the tool formula, but I've got a, I've got an edger that does the infield out at the ball field that about nine years ago that works really good, but I found out how it works a lot easier, and it just sits there. So is it a tool that will be used?
Yes, it will be used. The thing is, you know, when it comes to, like, the old decision before the Supreme Court threw this out, we had to prove that we, that, you know, there was space available, right? If not, then people can camp whatever they want on public land. So this is an opportunity for us to have conversations with people, to also protect the public, you know, that are utilizing these open spaces, the McKay Track, public land, public parks, and those kind of things, to, so they can utilize it freely and safely. And so you're going to provide us, and again, this is your ordinance, right? I, I think what is proposed is that an ordinance is created through input from, you know, your subject matter experts, as well as the board and the public, to create an ordinance that we all can live with, that emphasizes that there'll be safe public parks and public land, and that we can steer people towards services within the community and to not allow public camping. That's, that's the goal, I think, of this, of, of creating such ordinance like this. So, and it would be, again, a tool for us to utilize.
Tom, can I get a?
Well, Public Works doesn't do any of the enforcement or moving people off the property. But we do get regular complaints about specific individuals that are on our properties that the sheriff makes repeated visits to. And in those kinds of instances, this would be a clear ability of the sheriff to nip a problem in, before it really grows. You know, we, we had his instance where we had a person out there that was scaring a lot of people. And eventually, he did make a threat and was be able to move off, and in fact, wasn't 51/50'd, I think. But it took the sheriff so much time and effort, and our staff stressing over every single day of an encounter with this person who was very threatening. With that kind of situation, yes, this would be very, very helpful. But no, this is not the ultimate solution. We do not have a solution for the homeless issue. We only have tools to make it easier for society.
Go ahead.
So this is something that will help two of our largest departments with, with general fund monies, not including DHHS. And they're, they're asking for this help, fully aware that this isn't the fix-all, super glue, going to put it all back together. But it gives them another tool to get where they're going. So I, I know we've all got, you know, and, and, you know, and the reference to Yee-Haw earlier just irked the crap out of me, because that was 25 years of guy collecting rent, not doing what was asked of him. And at the end, 25 years later, we realized, oh, maybe, much to this may, of all the neighbors up there, most of the neighbors up there. So I, I'm just, that's over. That should be getting cleaned up, except for that phony land transfer, property transfer.
And Yee-Haw did cost the county money and continues to. I'm going to go to public comment on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 2229. I will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. Hi, my name's Amy Scott. I am a long-term Humboldt County resident, and I am currently a second-year master student in social work at Cal Poly. I led a kind of group of social workers last year when we were working with Urika to discuss the homeless ordinance 1040 that they, anti homelessness that they had created. And I have a really long annotated bibliography, including about 85 sources from everywhere, from the American Bar Association, the American Medical Association, just about every well-respected academic, rigorous research institution you can imagine that says criminalizing homelessness does not work. Every single time, like, you've mentioned it here and there. I appreciate Natalie bringing in some of the things about how it just kind of passes the buck on. And I just want to, like, when we talk about the Grants Pass decision being overturned, that was along the partisan lines. And Justice Sonia Sotomayor's defense is probably one of the most beautiful written defense that has happened, where she wrestles with what it means to be human, what it means to be American, what it means to support one another. Criminalization only serves to further marginalize individuals, to further push them into more desperate situations, and doesn't actually solve the issue of homelessness, which is a lack of affordable housing. I cannot stress about these research institutions. The lack of affordable housing is the reasoning of homelessness. And what we do in America is we individualize these problems. We say, oh, this person is addicted. Oh, this person is X, Y, or Z. But these are not personal, it may feel personal, but it is anecdotal evidence. You were talking about your experience with your mother, Michelle, when you're talking about individuals within our community, that is anecdotal evidence and does not, should not be what we use as prudent policymakers to write policy, to create policy, to enforce policy. When, in our community, we have, we're lucky to have the wisdom of Chief Judge, Chief Judge of the York Tribal Court, Justice Abby Abinadi. And one of the things that she said when speaking to our cohort was, when someone has arrived in her courthouse, it is not what has that person done wrong, but it is what, what have we as a community failed to do to support this person? When we are talking about individual communities who are suffering and struggling, these despicable questions, I just share consul's language about the mentally ill or addicted, those addicted to controlled substances allowing themselves to live in deplorable conditions is not.
Sorry, you ran out of time. Caller 9507, I will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ariel Hiltonberger, and I am calling in about this because I agree with the, the previous caller in that, you know, we need to use evidence to support this issue. And if you want people to throw stuff away, then you should provide places for them to do that. There are, there are very few receptacles in our county for the public to use, even on public land. And if you want people to desiccate in places that are okay to desiccate in, then you should provide public restrooms. There are so many businesses that do not allow people to use their restrooms anymore. And so where else can they go? There's like one, two public restrooms, maybe in Old Town, and there, there's just not that many. Like, if you want people to be housed, give them affordable housing. If you want people to dispose of their garbage in, like, a specific way, then provide them the means to do that. If you want them to desiccate where you want, then give them a place. Like, I, I agree that tools are needed, and it's not a, an issue that can be easily solved. But also, like the previous caller, penalizing people and pushing them further away from solutions by making it so that they get charges against them, or, I mean, having the sheriff go out instead of a social worker. Like, why aren't people going out that can actually help them, instead of just people going out and being like, no, you have to leave this place? Like, why aren't case managers or somebody else going out and trying to help these people? Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Caller 7718. I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
I always, when people come up and they have all kinds of expertise and, and this knowledge, that knowledge, and sound very well spoken, I always ask those people, well, what is the solution? And if there is a solution, how come you haven't implemented? I strongly support you moving forward with this ordinance. I think it's a tool that's necessary. I don't have a solution. I'm not claiming to be that smart. I didn't know, I wanted to mention that, there was a, there was a, a clear call on this one. Anyway, I want to mention that I just finished about 11 month battle. Somebody was trespassing my property, could not get them off. I just got an estimate of cleaning up the one person beyond, of $9,710. So that's what the public pays, that's what, that's what the United States also as far as cleaning things up. Affordable housing in, in California and most of the United States is, is a total fallacy. It's not affordable housing. Affordable housing down here is where the Mexico is with. And if something changes, is where somebody can go ahead and, and buy a $500 parcel and make payments for 10 years, and are allowed to go ahead and put up the plywood they can find. Maybe they get some bridge for people. They work for the materials to need and have a place to live, maintain sanitation, which is not top of the line, but it's something that's functional. And it's, and, you know, our society changes the rules and regulations regarding those kind of things, and, and permanent homeownership of that kind of nature. You guessed in the past, there is no solution, no matter what the prior speaker said. Strongly support again you moving forward with this ordinance. And I wish a lot of people would go out there like I did, the prior speaker here, and actually watch the sheriff working with the social workers on site to talk to these people that happened. People sometimes from some of the health organizations go out and that happens. But that is being done. I wish today, the sheriff and all of those who participate in that kind of process. Thank you all for this week today.
That's all on Zoom, Chair. Public comment in the room. CNN will close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Thanks. Couple things. Tom, when, when, I guess what I, a question I have of, about, you know, sort of the, the example that you gave where this person you know, sort of the, the example that you gave where this person's coming back and doing all these things. I mean, it sounds like, and as Supervisor Arroyo had mentioned, already doing illegal things, like they're, you know, they're causing stress and, and, you know, threatening violence and other things. So I'm just kind of wondering, how would this ordinance help under, or, an example is what helped in a situation where people are already engaged in illegal activities, environmental health violations and those sorts of things? Like, what's the, someone saying, like, what, what does this give that, that, in, you know, what does this change?
Since I have no police authority, I'm gonna have to defer to the sheriff on that because we can only report the problems. We, we can't physically, you know, we try to help people, we try to encourage them, but Public Works has no enforcement capability. We can give them a ticket if they're doing something in the county park for certain things, but at that time, the Mackay Track wasn't a county park. And that's kind of how we solved that problem. We did bring it into the park system, so then the park system rules applied. But we have many areas in the county that aren't in the parks or in the road right of way. And, you know, our Fernbridge site is a perfect example of that. It's a gravel extraction bar on the Eel River that a lot of people have used for a lot, long time for recreation, and over the last 10, 15, 20 years, has turned into an encampment location.
Right. And it was hard to control for those, some of those recreation activities were very illegal as well, including firearms and other things, and, and bonfires that left big messes and stuff like that, too. So, I mean, we, we've had these environmental issues and behavioral issues and public safety issues in that space, both from people who are housed, and, and I guess now some, and people that are also unhoused. So maybe this is a better question for the sheriff, which is, if they're already engaging in activities that are enforceable, what's, what's, what does this do? What has this changed that dynamic?
So how this changes things is that, number one, if there's a camping ordinance that prevents someone from camping on public land, it invites a conversation that we can have with that individual. So they're violating that particular ordinance in front of us. As we walk up to on someone who may be, you know, in a camp, if there's no camping ordinance, there may be an illegal fire there that was there. There may be evidence that they're defecating or disposing of hazardous materials illegally dumping in the area. We don't see them doing these violations, but they exist in that area. So we, we know, we can see it, but to prove who did it, we can't do that. But we can prove that they are actually physically there in a campsite, camping illegally at that point in time. And so that's, that's what we can do. We can notice them because, you know, there's circumstantial evidence that they're doing all those things, but we can't necessarily provide that circumstantial evidence as, as proof in, you know, something that may be an infraction or maybe a misdemeanor in court. But if we address the problem, which is illegal camping, ultimately, we can address those ancillary problems as well.
Okay. And I just want to address some comments, or, you know, around the, the concept that people are coming from other places or that sort of thing. For the most part, the data shows the majority of folks are people from here. And the fastest growing population we have now are elderly people in terms of, like, in terms of, like, risk of being, becoming homeless. That has a lot to do with housing, frankly, it really does, because if people on fixed incomes were, then the cost of housing is rising much faster than, than their fixed incomes. And, and then when they're forced to move for some reason, finding another place to live becomes impossible. I think the, the city of Arcata has a no camping ordinance. I think part of these ordinances are about how they get, how they are applied.
True.
And then, and it's, and I think you guys were speaking to that. It's like, there's, there's a lot of variability in not just the construction of an ordinance, but then, but then really the, you know, how it's applied, just like all of our ordinances. And, and so I, I, I understand it in, in terms of, as we manage properties, we want to make sure that we have the flexibility and the ability to do these things. That, or, but, like, saying these things, I mean, just manage the properties in general, whether we manage them for people camping or not camping. I mean, that's just, or whatever, all the other activities that may or may not occur on our public properties. This is, I do think that, that while, it's, it's still, we still have the same problem. If people are just packing up their stuff and then moving, where are they moving to? And that's, that's a real, this doesn't solve that. It's just, it just doesn't. I know, I do know that sometimes, and I will say, that some folks really, some folks do take advantage of that change that occurs, and, and they get the help they need and things are happening. Some people don't, sort of a lateral move, and some people actually, it's, it is a pretty negative impact on them. And we have to understand that there's, there's a variety of outcomes that occur. It's not all terrible, and it's not all good, you know? So, for me, it's, I mean, I'm just gonna say this, this isn't a priority for me. And I'm not, I'm not afraid of the conversation moving in, in, in a future tense, but we do have, remember, which, let me ask you this question. Which department do you think would be formulating this? Where, where's the staff time that would happen to actually do, do that work? Would it be in Public Works? Would it be our planning division? Would it be out of the sheriff's office? How, how would that work if we were to make an effort?
Well, we could get a committee together. We could get a working group together, and that could consist of Public Works, sheriff's office, code enforcement, members of the board. And we could, you know, essentially, there's other ordinances throughout the, the state that we could emulate and, and take pieces of, of ordinances, maybe locally, and figure out what's, what's good. One of the things that I would think would be a part of this ordinance is diversion, right? In order to provide, you know, some enforcement action on someone is, is diverting them into a program which negates the criminal element, right? The criminal charge, all this other stuff. If they divert into a program where they get off the street, or they're in, you know, a shelter, or they're, or they're going to DHHS, and they're not camping anymore, then there's no criminal charges that, you know, would be, would be, you know, pressed against them, so to speak. So there's a lot of different things the ordinance can do. And again, it can be creative here in our county to, to fit our needs and what we think, you know, are best for our community and our citizens while protecting the public-owned land. So there's a lot to consider, and it doesn't have to be draconian. It doesn't have to be, you know, heavy-handed. It just addresses an issue, a problem, because there are those, some of those people that will just refuse to leave, that are creating all those, those problems for us in our community that violate the rights of others. And that's essentially what laws are about, is to be in a civil society. And, and if someone wants to enjoy a community park, a Mackay Track trail and those kind of things, and there's someone that's preventing them from doing that, you know, it's their rights. The, the, the other person's rights that are infringed upon. So, so I think those, those are the outliers that really the ordinance would really address. But everyone else, you know, there's, there's opportunities for diverting.
And I would say in a civil society, you know, we would have, we have some expectations around the availability of housing, the availability of healthcare, the availability of, you know.
Absolutely. Take care of your family. One of the things that we don't see in America, that everywhere else seems in the world, they take care of the family when someone is, is, you know, is sick, you know, or destitute, that they bring them into their house, they take care of them, including elderly parents. You know, all those things that, you know, we'd like to see in society that don't exist here. And, but, you know, there was a comment about churches. Absolutely, churches should be stepping up and helping out, you know, in these circumstances at this point in time. But unfortunately, that's not happening.
Supervisor Brown?
Are we, and just out of, and maybe Michelle can help with this answer. 13, 14 years ago, we had a TAP program, and TAP used to take, it was up to 36 hours from the time they brought someone in till they could actually get them on the bus or out of town. Well, the problem with that being, in that 36 hours, they were getting ready to go at their lowest point. They'd either go get a fix or get up something else, and then they didn't want to go. And, and, and much to the help of DHHS and stuff, they lowered that to about seven and a half, eight hours. You were ready to go, they cleaned you up, they called somebody and everything else. Is TAP still, I used to get a, a monthly report on TAP, and I don't get that anymore, which makes me think, is TAP still active? Do you still use that? I mean, as a, as a tool to say, do you want to go home? And, and I understand to be a residency, they've had to have had a job or been here for, you know, it's, but, but the thing is, is TAP being used to its fullest extent, and I'm not talking about dumping, because I'm, you know, talking with Betty and stuff, there's still a little bit of that and stuff. But I mean, is TAP still a viable program in our, not, yeah?
The county has a transportation assistance program, and as far as I know, it is still up and running. And it is something to where there are members of, of DHHS that actually call to make sure that someone on the other end will receive them, right? That's a very important aspect, that we're not dumping them, we're not transporting them somewhere where they're not going to receive help. And so if those things are set up, if those, that communication is there, they'll provide an opportunity to get that person a bus ticket to that location, and so they can get the assistance that they need. And I know Betty has her own program.
Yeah.
That's, you know, if people need to be transported somewhere, then, then that is there.
And I did appreciate your response. In a civil society, families were a lot stronger and took care of each other. Now they said, let the county take care of them. I've heard that so many times. I can't do anything with them, let the county take care of them. Which means I'm not, and, you know, a lot of other people are now taken care of when what they used to call civil society was the family unit. So.
I apologize. I didn't realize Supervisor Wilson had another question. I also want, if Michelle wants to weigh in, I didn't mean to omit DHHS, but I wanted to see if there was an appetite from this board before we pulled in all, everyone. So.
Absolutely. DHHS is a huge partner with us on, on all of this. So, thank you.
And then, can I allow Supervisor Wilson, though, to ask his next question? I'm sorry.
Sorry. Where I was going was, if there was a process for this, and you mentioned some, some of the stakeholders that would be a part of that, what about the Human Rights Commission? What about our homeless advocacy, advocacy groups and others who have, you know, really are in these spaces and, and have a, have some legitimate concerns? Where's your, how do you feel about that?
Absolutely. You know, I feel like education and inputs on advocacy groups and, and buy-in from the community on this ordinance, and how, how we're, we're treating people out there, and how we're, we're addressing some of these needs. Again, I think people would be surprised. The county's MIST program is outstanding. I can't say enough about how DHHS has partnered with several law enforcement agencies, including the sheriff's office, and doing outstanding outreach for people and providing opportunities. And, you know, I don't want to underscore what Michelle said in her personal story about her, her mother, because we hear this a lot, you know, that the people are making a decision on their own and that kind of stuff. But you know, if you're the family member that's at home, anguishing over your loved one that's living out in the community, that's drug-addicted, mentally ill, whatever it may be, the reason why they're out there, you know, the community struggles, and our family struggles with that. And we, they ask us, please do something, and MIST sees us. They have those personal contacts as well. And so I just think the humanity side of things, I know we, we advocate for, you know, maybe different, different accountability or whatnot, but, you know, for the person that is stuck in these conditions, I, I, I want to see better for them. And, and that's what the goal of MIST is. So.
One last thing. When we talk about, you know, the family units, it, as part of this, but I, I will say that when the family units are very stressed about the cost of living in the, in, especially in relation to rent, and especially in relation to healthcare, where we're, you know, it's the number one cause of, you know, the medical bankruptcies, like, you know, on the rise, and, and those things are big stressors in what we, we can hark back to these, these sort of constructs around our families, which I think are really important. But then we have to also understand the react, the current reality of, of those situations. It's just very different than it was when, you know, some time ago. And I think we're gonna have to, we can't, as a county by ourselves, fix those things.
Right.
And we'll, we'll try, but, you know, we'll do our best. And we'll advocate for, you know, better solutions and resources and those things to do that. But I fundamentally understand why people are concerned about, you know, the, the question of where does someone go? And I think that that's, that's not a bad question. I mean, I think it's the appropriate question to ask in this, in this discussion with that. And of course, as you, we all, as we all know, there, there's another piece to this, which is the, everyone else in the society also trying to navigate through this. And then we have these public spaces that are for the public, and they need to be safe and, and available to families and the, and the, and the folks that need to, you know, have to be able to use them to make everything else work as well. So I, I don't have really much more comment on this. And I, I just, I'm not enthusiastic about this conversation, and I'm not enthusiastic about prioritizing an ordinance like this, but I'm not afraid of having these conversations as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. I wanted to give Michelle an opportunity, but I do want to just say one thing. And the reason I read what I read earlier is because in the, something that I was saying, if there is a place for them, that was a very key word, that you don't, that can be put into the ordinance. And I'm gonna tell you, I appreciate the public comment. However, my mom, I had places for her many times. She refused to go because she didn't have to leave. She could have came and stayed with me. She didn't want to. She chose under the bridge, and nobody told her she had to leave there. If she had been told even one time that, that she had to leave, then maybe she would have taken another option that was handed to her or given to her, but she didn't. And I don't want ever to do heavy-handedness, but it is a tool. And if there are places, because the, one, number one is where do they go? We don't want to move them. But if there are options, then it is our responsibility as well to help them get those options that are gonna make their living conditions better. I'm sorry that I didn't have you on there. I wanted to see what the appetite with the board was. You hear it, but I would like to give you an opportunity.
I'm sure Connie wishes she could be here, she was listening. And I would just say that she, yes, would love to be part of this conversation. And she's asked staff to prepare an annual report to you all, a presentation on housing and homelessness. And in that, it might be good for you all, if you're interested in pursuing an ordinance, to hear more about kind of what the changes have been in the landscape, what might be coming, in your consideration of an ordinance. So, for that.
Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo?
I was actually gonna ask for DHHS input. So, yeah, I, I mean, I guess, I, I think it could be helpful to hear a little bit more from your perspective on what you think, whether you think this is a tool that, based on, I mean, I know we're painting with a broad brush, and every situation is unique, but, you know, is this, is it difficult to convince folks to take advantage of services that are available? And would this be something that you think could, you know, tip the scales for folks to, to make a difference?
That's a tough question. I do agree that it is a tool in a toolbox. We often talk about how enforcement is a challenge when we make ordinances, right? How are we gonna enforce it? How are people gonna follow it? So that can be challenging. And if we don't have places for people to go, it has to be coupled with that, in my opinion. We do have staff that are all over this county and your districts, going out and doing outreach in places where people who are homeless and houseless are staying, and offering services, helping them get their driver's license, because they don't have a driver's license or ID to get them to wherever, or to get a job, or a home, or whatever. And there are folks that engage in those services, and there are folks that don't. And I think that there are reasons for that, lots of complicated reasons for that. And so an ordinance may change things for some folks, and it's not gonna change things for other folks. We in DHHS would be very interested in providing input on any such ordinance, because we have a, a perspective, right, that's, that's a little different than just something to offer, something to add.
Supervisor Madron?
Well, thanks, Michelle. Appreciate that. Yeah, your staff are all over the place, doing everything they can. I think we all know that. You know, I, I often hear that there's always beds available at the mission. They've got 200 beds, and they're almost never full. I remember, it wasn't that long ago that a woman, the weather was so ... I remember, it wasn't that long ago, that a woman, the weather was so bad, she was up towards Pearson area, Pearson Building Center, and she didn't have money for a bus, and she slept the night in a dumpster and got crushed when the garbage pickup service came. She couldn't get to the mission. I would say probably half or more of the people that are living in the woods have dogs. You can't go into the mission if you have a dog. So as Michelle said, there are a lot of reasons why people don't take advantage of beds. I also think it's really kind of ironic that there is always a bed at the jail, you know, so to speak. I mean, there was a time where we were overwhelmed at the jail, but now there's room at the jail. And we as a society provide enough money, if you end up at the very end of the rope, and you violated some laws or whatever, and you end up in jail, there's always room for you there, but we don't have the money to provide the services and the opportunities to treat the various people that have different, like, there's no place to go if you have a dog, like I said, you know? Could there be, you know, a place where if you have dogs, you're allowed to come there, right? I mean, it's, it's interesting to me how we always fund the very dead end of things, but we're not funding the stuff up ahead of that. And that's really us as a society and our priorities, of putting the money in prevention and upfront, rather than the very end of it, and I'm not, in no way do I want to disparage our correctional officers or anything else, because it's not about that.
No.
I will say, my comments about Yee-Haw were incorrect, that it has cost the county. Probably, if you added it all up, maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars over 25 years. But if you create a sanctioned camp with full-time, 24-hour, 7 management, you're spending a half million dollars a year. If, you know, that's 10, 20 million dollars we would have spent on housing those 40 people. So, I think what I was trying to say was that while there are many problems with, with Yee-Haw that we all know about, it did provide housing for people. It wasn't perfect, it had lots of issues, but there was never a, a medical outbreak there, even though it, the potential was always there. I think the potential gets even higher when you congregate people. One thing about when they're all living out in the woods, why there's a lot of hazards, they're not congregated as much, where they can spread disease and things like that. We bring them all together and congregate them, that risk goes up tremendously, and we've seen that. So I just wish we as a society would prioritize things a lot differently, I think, like some of the callers we talked about. I will say, the one church in McKinnonville, Joyful Healer, they're amazing. They do amazing work, and take a lot of heat from it, from that community. Thanks to DHHS, there's one toilet there that is the only toilet that many of these people can use, otherwise they're defecating in the woods, or wherever they happen to be that night, in a storefront, under a shelter, or wherever it might be, but, but thanks to DHHS funding and Joyful Healer's willingness, they have a toilet there. It's the only one in all of McKinnonville that's a, a public toilet, basically, to be able to utilize. But Joyful Healer catches a ton of flak for it, and they don't get a lot of donations for it. There are people that come, you know, the, the God Squad, the different people that bring lunches and this and that. Once a week, they do a program. Aha would bring the, the trailer once a week, or every, you know, twice a month, or whatever, for showers. So it's just, you know, and I get people that call me and go, you know, you need to do something about that damn toilet. I got to walk by there with my children every day and, and see that mess, you know, whatever. And I said, well, you know, it's actually an opportunity for you to educate your children about how lucky they are, that they have parents, they have a home, they have these things. So, again, I don't have the solutions. I mean, I, I have no problem with having a discussion about what an ordinance might look like, I would value DHHS's input in a major way. I have said this many times, that I think dumping should be free. You know, I think if we had free dumping, it would solve a lot of our illegal dumping problems, which frankly costs us a hell of a lot more than the revenue we receive from charging for dumping. But only one county in the state does that, Kern County, you know, and it's certainly not the budget time to try and bring a proposal together like that, but that was an issue that's been brought up, about all the dumping all over, and it's getting worse. I think we all know that, Tom can tell us that, and others. So again, I think my highest priority would be, we figure out how as a society to, to have ordinances and systems and support services that bring the resources upfront, and start doing better at providing those opportunities. You know, McKinnonville, thanks to this board, we just approved the Town Center Ordinance, that's going to create potentially over 20 years, 2,500 new housing opportunities, that are probably apartments and condos, which are a lot more affordable than a single-family home. So that's a piece in the right direction, right? 6,000 more people potentially, that will also create a lot of jobs with retail, economic development, and other kinds of things. Those are all pieces to the puzzle, but it's just always amazed me how we'll spend all the money on the end part, the jail part, but we won't spend it upfront. And there's something wrong with that set of priorities.
Sheriff Ponsel?
I just want to also just remind everyone, too, that we have a new navigation center that's going to be built, you know? And, you know, this is an opportunity that we can use to, you know, steer people towards that navigation center, and, you know, to have the conversation, and to provide these, you know, the people that are, you know, in, struggling to, to have, you know, to go and get plugged into one of the many programs that may be offered there.
Thank you. I also want to add that there's no way I would have ever left DHHS out of this conversation. And I hope that you folks know that. I just wanted to see what the board's direction would be. It's not a priority for anybody. I, I, it's a priority for me, it's a priority for my district, to, to have solutions and tools, but we've heard from this board, so I appreciate Tom and Sheriff Ponsel and Michelle, and so there is no action from this motion today, or from this discussion. Thank you.
Some really confused here. So we, we've got, two of our large departments says this would be a tool they could use. DHHS says they want to work with it, and we're not going to take an action for what reason exactly? I, I just heard everybody said they had an appetite for this discussion, to look for something. And, and again, I, I, I would, I would love to see it move forward, if it's something that, that our, that our sheriff, our Public Works Director, and our DHHS could use, but if we're not going to do that, then...
Michelle would like to comment.
Just to clarify, I, my comment is, if your board decides that you want to pursue an ordinance, we would like to be part of that. I'm not necessarily saying one way or the other.
I didn't say you were advocating. I said you would work with the sheriff and Public Works. Sheriff and Public Works like the idea, and, you know, I mean, I don't know if we should build the dog kettles before we build the jail. I don't know anything about the end results and stuff, I just know we have issues. And I personally spend probably 60 to 80 hours a year on homeless issues alone, out at the McKay Track, around Redwood Fields. Just, just last week, I had one of them, they left the lock off the dumpster, and they took everything out of the dumpster to go through it, it's a big dumpster, and then left it. So I get six phone calls, saying there's trash all over the parking lot, because they went through it, the crows have spread it, and everything else. I, I, that's, that's a rare occasion, but sheriff has been out there where people have dumped full, pick up loads of trash, and we've gone through it and found multiple envelopes, and actually been able to go back and say, come get your stuff. So with that being said, I appreciate everything the sheriff's doing, I appreciate what Tom's been doing and everything else, but Public Works does not do waste management. I, and in this conversation, I really have to thank Frank, and especially Linda, for the years of, you made a phone call, and she was able to come pick up stuff for me throughout the county, through recology, and they're a great partner in things like that. But if we're not going to have a conversation about fixing the front end or anything else, this, this is, this is an actuality in your face, in the middle end, that we've got to address. And we've been talking about homelessness and housing and everything else for 12, 14, 20 years and everything else, and I know family values have changed and everything else. We're not making headway, guys, and if we decide we don't want to do this because it might be uncomfortable, or it might upset somebody, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. If, if we're not going to do anything about this, then I want this hour and 20 minutes back in my life.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to make a motion to direct staff to form a committee, as was suggested, that would include Public Works Director Mattson, and the sheriff, and appropriate staff from DHHS, to put together a compassionate assistance ordinance, I want to call it. Because I heard you talking about that a lot, Billy, you know, and I, I know you guys really, you do do your best. And I know there's been really good partnerships between you and DHHS, to try and bring as many street outreach workers into this, into the system as possible, as an approach. And I know for you guys, the last thing you want to do is arrest somebody and throw them into the jail. I know you want to help them. So, from that perspective, I'm putting this motion forward, because I think getting that committee together with two board members, which I would, in my motion, include Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Bone, if they're willing to serve, to work with that committee, and see what you can come up with that, that works towards this compassionate assistance approach. Which we've had many programs, funding's tough, I look forward to the report that you guys are going to bring forward, to kind of get us up to speed with where we've been, where we're at, where we're going, because I think that would be incredibly informative for this, this board. But I, I, I do value the conversation, and I think we, if we put our heads together, can probably figure out ways to make this a tool that could be a value, not one that's punitive, that just looks to throw people in jail, and I know that's not what you're talking about. And I just very much appreciate Supervisor Bushnell for bringing it forward. I think that conversation would be a good one, so I'm willing to support that with that motion.
I would like to second the CAO ordinance.
Yes. Of course, having them involved as well, if that's what I heard you as an amendment to the motion.
Can, can you help me understand whether camping on county property would be a part, preventing camping on county property would be a part of that?
It would be...
Is that the intent?
Yes, it would be, the intent for that to be included in the discussion about, what do we do about camping on county property? Can we do an analysis of surplus property and figure out where people could be, or not be? If there's no other, you know, I mean, yeah, the details are in there, but yes, I would say that as a tool, that's important, but as you said, and as others have said, we've experimented with that. It hasn't been all that successful. Eureka, as an example. So, I'm not wild-eyed enough to think that we're going to solve this thing really quickly and easily, to figure out how exactly we do all this, but I don't have a problem, as Supervisor Wilson said, I'm not afraid of the conversation. You know, I think that there's willingness to try and figure out, are there things we can do that will work better than what we're doing right now? And that's certainly a piece of that puzzle.
Can I comment?
Yes, please.
I, I'm, as, as it's phrased right now, I'm not supportive of that, because we have a lot of irons in the fire with the navigation center that we need to see through to completion. We have other tools in the toolbox, as we've discussed, and frankly, I, I don't know that this particular approach is the, what I think is the best use of our staff's time. Since everyone has referenced it, I will say, I'm also not afraid to have this conversation. It's about what I think is a good use of time and resources, and to achieve a goal. I do believe that for many of the instances where someone is engaging in threatening or aggressive behavior, there are other options, and I certainly want folks to feel that they can go to our public spaces, so if there's the desire to bring back something that's specific to county parks, or specific locations where there is an acute issue, I'm open to that, but I, I would want it to just be really targeted, and I don't feel that a task force to work on that right now is the, is the thing that I want to spend our resources on.
Supervisor Madron, can you restate your motion, please?
Yeah, the motion is to direct staff to form this committee, as suggested, that would include Public Works Director, or an appointee, sheriff and appointee, DHHS, the CAO, and two ad hoc members from this board, Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Bone, to come together and figure out, is there a way to develop a compassionate assistance ordinance? That's a really broad thing, but I just, I, I state that as the title of it, just simply because I think that's what we're all hoping to try and do.
Um, do you...
But there's a lot to figure out there, and I appreciate what Supervisor Arroyo says about limited resources and stuff, but there seems to be a willingness to try and work together to figure out if there are things we can do, so that's really what I'm supporting. Was that clear? As a motion? Okay, thank you.
It was, and I'll, I'll agree with it, and I just, as the second, and I, I appreciate the, the financial concerns of, of, of spending the money. I don't think it will be that much, considering it's our largest issue, and the amount of money we spend on other things that do not seem to be happening, but we're, we're still spending on them, so I just, I, I don't think that's the extreme issue. The extreme issue is getting this problem at least addressed, or maybe seeming like we got dressed. I'm, people are so frustrated, and it's so funny, people aren't frustrated until it gets on their doorstep, and it's getting on their doorstep because it's spreading out, and it's going out, and it, it scares me about the county property thing, because now we move them on to private property. But I am in no favor of, we can look at surrounding counties, that have tried to do day use areas or parking lot areas, and Arcata House tried one, it didn't work out, everybody's tried one, they're just expensive. As Supervisor Madron stated, they're expensive, but cheap, unpermitted, unzoned properties are a lot cheaper, so I don't know what we do.
Michelle wanted to weigh.
I was just going to say, and I don't know that I need to say this, the CAO reference, I believe Supervisor Bone was just the compassionate access, compassionate assistance ordinance. I don't know that you wanted the CAO on it, Supervisor Bone, I don't know, anyway.
I was just using the acronym.
The point I'm trying to make is that I'm not supporting a banning of overnight camping ordinance. I'm supporting a compassionate assistance discussion and possible ordinance that really tries to look at, what are the tools we need to try and help people? And I, you know, banning overnight camping has been a suggested piece to that, but that's not what my focus is in this motion. My focus is, we've got some bright people here, and with the update report from DHHS, that's going to give us a clue on where we're at, where we're heading, which is not a great place, frankly, with what's going on federally, frankly. But I do think that there could be some really deep discussions that could be brought back to this board about what you all think might be some solutions. One of them was brought forward today as a banning of camping, as a tool. You two have said you think that's a good one, but I think getting the whole team together would be a way for us to at least further the conversation, and do the best we can to figure out how to move from where we're at to someplace better. I don't know how we do that, but I trust you guys to put some good thought into it.
Supervisor Wilson?
I will be reluctantly supporting this motion, but I really do want to emphasize my concerns around what Supervisor Arroyo says, in terms of, we have a lot of stuff on the plate here, and so I want to make sure that these discussions that you guys are having are effective, but also not getting in the way of, we already have prioritized lists of, of ordinances, and things we're trying to get done through the general plan and other things, you know, there's just other stuff. And all of which is, we could have another meeting about each one of those things again here today, but, so I just want to say, like, I, I think it's, it's, it is important, and I, I do want to emphasize that what Supervisor Bushnell was saying around, around what it, you know, what is that contact that actually gets people motivated to take the actions to, to move forward, it is really important, and like I said, sometimes that works out really well, sometimes it's sort of a neutral things, and sometimes it is, it is really negative. And, and I think, depending on our perspectives, we focus on one of those things, and I'm just hoping that we're really emphasizing the, the need to, where we can, move people upward in their, in their well-being as, as best we can. So I'm, I'm confident that you guys have that in your, in your, what you want to do, and so I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Kaylee?
Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo?
No.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you, guys. We are going to take a lunch break from now until 1:00 PM, and we'll be back on...
and we'll be back on for time sets at 1:00 PM, starting with...